Hello, my name is Brian O'Connor. I'm the Chairman of the Stratford Planning Commission. Today is March 21st, 2023. It is now 6:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. The Stratford Planning Commission is now open for a public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Regular members present at this meeting are Mr. Aurelia, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Vacola, and Ms. Graham. I would also like to welcome Sis Smitha Etada, our Town Planner, and Aileen Marsh, our Recording Secretary. Before calling the first petition, I'd like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is the policy of this commission to have questions of the petitioner directed through the Chairman. The Chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical For the record, in accordance with the state statute, tonight's petition was advertised on the Town Planning and Zoning webpage in the Town Clerk's Office. The petition was also advertised in the Connecticut Post on March 8th and March 15th. I will now advise the Town Planner to read the first petition.
Thank you, Chairman. The first petition is for a subdivision of 630 James Farm Road. It is petition of David P.D. DeCilio seeking a five-lot subdivision with lot sizes ranging from one and a half acres to 3.7 acres in an RS1 zone.
Thank you. I will now ask the petitioner to announce your name and address. Also, has the petitioner posted a sign on the property?
I have posted a sign on the property. My name is David DeCilio. I reside at 6020 Main Street in Stratford, Connecticut, and a sign has been posted on the property for approximately 30 days. It's up there right now.
Also, have you submitted the certificates of mailing to the abutters?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I did. I submitted them to Sis Smitha and they were mailed greater than 21 days ago.
All right, I'll invite you to present.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So I'm here today requesting approval of a five-lot subdivision. The subdivision consists of four residential building lots. One has a house currently on it, and three will be new lots. And the fifth parcel is one I'm sure you've never seen before. It's a very tiny parcel that's going to contain nothing but the cell tower and the cell equipment. And that's a very unusual lot. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. As I mentioned, the notification letters were sent out and the sign was posted. Now, before submitting this application to the Planning Commission, I went before other town boards and commissions and obtained approvals for this plan. We obtained approvals from both the Zoning Board of Appeals and from the Inland Wetlands Commission. Just quickly to review the Zoning Board of Appeals approvals, they were very simple. These lots, all the lots I'm going to present, meet all of the criteria for size, acreage, setbacks, and all that good stuff. There were a couple nuances in the regulations that had to do with the width of the accessways when the driveways are a little bit longer, so I was able to achieve a waiver on that front. And also, quite frankly, the cellphone lot is an unprecedented, very unusual parcel, and that particular parcel, we also obtained a waiver from the commission on. So let me use my pointer here, if I may, and if I need to turn this, if you can't see, please, on this side, please let me know. Let me do that right now. I'm hoping the easel does not go down. So I called this the enclave on James Farm Road because when I lived in Fairfield, there was a private driveway called Spring House, and we joked all the neighbors and called it the enclave because it was kind of a private little area with beautiful homes. So this exhibit, which is the existing conditions survey, shows the frontage along James Farm Road, and then approximately 1,000-plus feet of depth, I think it's 1,250 feet, all the way to Orno Golf Course. Then the back runs along the second hole of Orno, now called Black Hawk Golf Course or Country Club, I'm not sure. Then it comes down, and this little block here was cut out by Mr. Fedorko, the previous owner, for his son's house. So he originally owned this as a big rectangle, but when I acquired it, it is in this highlighted There are several buildings on the property that currently exist, and they include a single-family house, which is a very unique house. It's sort of a mid-century modern design. Behind it are a bank of garages. It's a three-car garage, but I would call it a four-car garage because one of its, it's just whatever, it's just the way it's designed. It's about the size of a four-car with some sheds on either side. There also exists, right adjacent to the garages, a cell tower and the associated equipment, which is in a small building. So that's what currently exists on the property. If any of the commissioners had an opportunity to drive by it or visit the property, I hope they did. It's on the high side of James Farm, so it goes up from the road, and then it levels off right about this midpoint, and then from the midpoint back, it has a very gradual grade down. Most of it has been used to, Mr. Fedorko, I guess, was a big farmer because they grew, I heard, some of the best corn in town back in the day. So that's the existing property as it exists now. What I'm proposing is this subdivision, and I'm going to go over each of the lots individually. Lot 1 has 178 feet of frontage. It's the one with the existing house on it. Goes back around, see if my notes are correct. It totals 1.62 acres. It says it goes back 400 feet, but I don't believe it does. Yeah, 380 feet, it goes back 380 feet. So it's this rectangle right here. Currently has a driveway on it with drainage, the cell tower, everything on Lot 1 is right here, and that's going to remain the same. And those structures will remain. Lot 2 is a rear lot directly behind Lot 1, so that's this lot here. So the driveway accessway is 25 feet, comes in, for the accessway, not the driveway accessway, but could be a driveway, to a very large lot that is 3.6 acres with 2.9 acres of usable land. Very large. Has .46 acres of wetland soils to the rear of the property, and those wetland soils are identified on the map as the dotted areas. So that's like kind of back here, and just a little bit here and here, so just all the way to the rear of the property. So that's Lot 2. Lot 3 is a rear lot with 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road, a width of 207 feet and a depth of 560 feet totaling 2.82 acres with 1.891 acres of usable area and .61 acres of wetlands. Let me point that out. That's the center driveway going for this property here. Lot number 4, which I happen to think is the nicest, is a rear lot with 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road, a width of 182 feet, a depth of 204 feet, and it has no wetlands. That's this lot here. So as you can see, all these lots are, you know, look, I've lived in Stratford a long time, and I'm a real estate broker by my trade, and I sell all over the place. These are gigantic. They're very, very large lots. The fifth parcel is something, as I said, this board has never seen before, perhaps no board's ever seen before, and I certainly have never seen the situation myself. In the middle of Lot number 1 exists a communications tower or a cell tower and the associated equipment. This very small, non-residential lot that is commercially used as a cell tower has been approved by the Stratford Zoning Board of Appeals as a separate little tiny 3,000-square-foot I highlighted it in orange. I know you probably can't see from that distance. The reason I subdivided it is there's a very unusual set of circumstances, and that is is that the town tax assessor will not assess the tower and equipment separately. So whoever ends up owning Lot 1 will be required to pay the tax bill for the cell tower and then collect reimbursement from the cell tower company. The cell tower company does not want that, and I'm sure that I don't want it as owner of this property, and whoever eventually buys the house on Lot 1 doesn't want that. Furthermore, I believe that, for the record, I believe the cell tower is undervalued from an assessment perspective by a significant amount that, in my opinion, and I said this before the Zoning Board of Appeals, I believe will yield an additional $40,000 or $50,000 in taxes to the town. So it makes all the sense in the world to carve it out, let me give it to them, and then they can get taxed separately. That's the idea here. So Parcel 5 is this 3,000-square-foot lot, which was a challenge for the Zoning Board of Appeals to approve because it's asked for everything, no frontage, doesn't meet any residential criteria whatsoever. However, it's not a residential lot. Now, this is the subdivision I'm requesting you to approve tonight. As part of this subdivision, I need to show and demonstrate locations of houses, driveways, drainage. I'm going to go over that next, but I just want the board to understand, I'm going to be selling the lots, so an individual buyer can come and move the house. They can move a driveway. They can do what they choose once they own the land. However, when you go to get a building permit, you've got to get signed off by wetlands, engineering, zoning, and it goes through all the departments, and if it's not exactly or very close to where it is on my plan, they may have to make, reapply the application to the wetlands, or they may have to satisfy the town engineer, or if they were to be so egregious to try to encroach a setback line, they'd have to go back to ZBA. I don't anticipate that, but I just want to put that on the record. So I know you have copies of all this, but I'll try to kind of go over as best I can. The site plan shows the proposed locations of three new residential dwellings. Lot 2, Lot 3, and Lot 4. Each new home will be on, as I mentioned earlier, between 1.5 and 3 acres. Water will be provided by private well because there is no water on the street, and sewer will be onsite septic systems. All electrical communication lines will be underground as required for new roads, but even though this isn't a road, we're not interested in having telephone poles. The site plan shows a single driveway that comes up from James Farm Road that will serve all three homes. Now again, this is just my idea of the best way to do this. I mean, why put in two driveways or three driveways? They're very expensive to build, when we can put in one and then peel off and have easement agreements and access agreements. And the driveway's right here. This single driveway has several catch basins to collect rainwater and snowmelt and directs that water into cul-de-sac underground chambers with overflow piped to the storm drain and the road. If you look right here, that's a bank of a dozen cul-de-sac chambers. Now, as late as, and this is my fault because I'm not an engineer and I'm not an attorney, as late as today, I learned that those cul-de-sacs did not handle the water properly, and I have some correspondence between Kevin and my engineer, and those retentions retained, and I can read it to you if you'd like for the record, something like 217 cubic feet of a one-inch rainfall. This is all above my pay grade. But according to their calculations at the town, they needed 273, so we added a couple more, which are not shown on this plan. So there's going to be basically two more of those retention chambers down at the bottom to meet the town engineer's standard and the town standard of retention. All the house driveways will have drains, and all gutters from homes will be piped to additional underground chambers with the overflow bleeding to the surface, which is now required. Back in the day, when I started in real estate 35 years ago, builders used to build a house and they'd just have the gutter, you know, with a little thing to let the water go off. Nowadays, you have to retain all the water, so there's underground retention chambers for all of the houses, and I can show you those if you'd like to see them. It's a little in the weeds with detail, but there's some here, there's some here, and oh, this has a, this shows a small rain garden on Lot 4, but that may end up being underground chambers if somebody doesn't want a rain garden. Each of the lots also has its own septic system, and those septic system test holes were dug, perk tests were done, and everything was supervised by the Health Department, and they all are satisfactory for four-bedroom homes. So now, also required for the Planning Commission is a soil and erosion control report, or plan, if you will. This plan, the soil erosion control measures will consist of 400 feet of silt fence along the northeastern portion of the property. It's here, here. During construction at each house and the driveway, anti-tracking pads will be installed. It's here, 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 and here. All topsoil that's taken from any given lot will be stockpiled, and generally what happens, depending on the time of year that you build, if it has to go through the winter, they seed it with a rye, so it stabilizes the topsoil pile. So we have topsoil pile areas here, 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 and here. This one is for the driveway cut. And of course, the catch basins are installed with silt stacks and hay bales. Again, engineering is going to mandate all this, so they don't get clogged up with any silt. And that's it for what my presentation is. I would like to take a look at my notes regarding the, oh, one very, two more very important things. As part of my application, I'm asking for two considerations from the commission. One, there's a regulation, and you know it because you're the planning board, that if you have a five-lot or greater subdivision, you need to designate open space. This is a five-lot subdivision, but technically it's four residential lots plus that little donut hole, so I'm asking for a waiver of open space. And the second waiver I'm requesting is a sidewalk waiver. This 75 feet of frontage that I'm basically creating from these new lots has no sidewalks on this side, and no sidewalks, of course, in front of here, and then there's a sidewalk in front of this house that starts about 40 feet down, and topographically, it's just not feasible to install sidewalks in the property. So there were some town comments from both Kelly Carrigan and I believe Sis Smitha maybe even, to consider trees along the roadway, and I'm certainly open to that. And I haven't, there's no fancy plan here, but I thought maybe a couple of white oaks or red oaks would be nice at the corner of this triple accessway here, and maybe one more in front of the house. But I can certainly add more or less depending on the commission's desire. It's an existing road, and as you said, Madam Secretary, that the, you know, this is what it is. The only thing that's going to happen is the driveway's going to go up, and you're not even going to bother to see any of these houses from James Farm Road anyway. But I'd certainly be willing to put a couple of trees to address that comment. There was a comment about United Illuminating Easements, and I've been in touch with them, and we already, I mean, they are really, really strict with their easements and language before they pull power. So the town engineer was concerned about it, but I can rest assured to this commission that these houses will need windmills because they won't have electricity unless those easements are in place before, to the satisfaction of the United Illuminating Company. So that, I think, addresses a lot of what I would like to present this evening. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if the board has any questions.
Thank you for your time. After Sis Smitha gives us her overview, we'll open up for questions. So at that point, I'd like to ask the Town Planner to summarize her staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So Mr. DeCilio has explained the application in a very detailed manner, and I just want to touch upon some considerations that, you know, you have to review before you make a final decision. Those are the comments from the town staff, the town engineer, and the Conservation Superintendent. First of all, I would like to reiterate that this is a very straightforward subdivision. Like Mr. DeCilio said, it's in an RS1 zone. It's, you know, permitted use, and, you know, he received all the approvals from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So with respect to zoning, there are not any concerns at all. But with respect to engineering, the town engineer and I had a conversation this afternoon too, when applicant's engineer has sent updated drainage plan and drainage map, and I asked him what the issue was, and he said he asked the applicant to address stormwater runoff due to one-inch rainfall and stormwater runoff due to peak hour flow. These are two different things. One-inch rainfall is when there's one-inch rainfall, they have the retention chamber, the water is stored in there and then released gradually into the town's drainage system. Peak hour flow is when there is heavy rainfall and flooding, and, you know, at that time, you want to make sure that the water is not coming down the hill and clogging the town's drainage system with all the debris and other materials. So the applicant addressed that in a, you know, in his comments this afternoon, and he sent the updated plan. We don't have the drawings before us, unfortunately. I know he was not able to provide paper copies because he was on the road himself. But this brings a very valid point, you know, about what is the purpose of a public hearing? The public hearing is not just for the applicant to present to the commission, but also to educate the general public on, you know, what's the application about and how does it impact them. So giving them due opportunity to review and consider, you know, all the changes that have been proposed, and come with any comments that they have to the commission on, you know, whether they support it or whether they feel like, you know, they strongly oppose it because they, this would impact their home down the street or whatever is the reason. So that level of public involvement unfortunately did not occur so far because, you know, the engineering designs were submitted just late this afternoon. But having said that, I had a conversation with the town engineer, and I asked, how critical is this for the approval of the subdivision itself? Because it kind of, you know, adheres to all other zoning standards. So the engineer said to me that it does not change the layout of the homes. As long as the applicant is willing to work with staff to approve, you know, to, you know, come to a point where the town engineer is satisfied with the drainage plan presented, then it is fine to provide a conditional approval. Meaning that if, you know, if the applicant does not satisfy the town engineer, the town engineer would send an email to staff saying that his comments have not been satisfied yet, and the zoning enforcement officer would place, you know, a hold on the permit. The applicant would not be able to file the site plan in the Town Clerk's Office because I will not, you know, bring the map to Brian, Mr. Chairman, for his signature, and the town engineer would not sign it. So he would still have to work with town staff to come to a point where, you know, the town is satisfied that his, you know, proposal is not impacting the town's drainage system. I know 20 years back, things were different, but right now Connecticut has a new law on municipal stormwater permitting, and every town must adhere to the MS4 permitting requirements. Town of Stratford is part of that MS4 permitting system, so it has become absolutely critical to, you know, make sure that things are designed and drained properly based on what Connecticut law requires us to do. The second thing that the town engineer has mentioned was about the easement for a pipe to the rear of the property, and he said there is no easement right now, and he just wants to know who is owning this pipe. The town is draining through that right now, but they just want to know, in case of the future development, who has the right to drain this? Once, you know, people build homes, they become very territorial about their properties, so how do you get access to this? The third one that he mentioned was about the utility pole and for which no easement has been shown. And the fourth was the sidewalks itself, and this we had a good conversation on, and I, you know, building sidewalks is a very important aspect of the town's long-range vision to promote pedestrian connectivity from forest to shore. We are investing a lot of money in the bicycle infrastructure in front of Town Hall, but, you know, when it comes to roads like James Farm Road, if you don't have sidewalks, then how would you connect them to the, you know, broader system that you want to be in place? So I, I think that's something that this commission has to weigh on, whether, you know, you would grant that waiver or not. In the town engineer's opinion, sidewalks are really critical, and it's not that the whole road doesn't have sidewalks, there are locations where there are sidewalks, so it is a feasible option in spite of the topography that is there. The last thing is the street trees, and when I asked Conservation Superintendent what she thinks about street trees, she said those would be welcome. But the point is, the subdivision regulations require them. They do not encourage them, they require them. So if the applicant wants to get a waiver from street trees, that's a different thing, but right now, he's required to provide based on the regulations. And I know he's willing to plant street trees, so maybe that should be a condition, that he should work with the Conservation Superintendent to come to a point where, you know, they decide how many trees, what type, and how tall they should be and all those things. Because these will be street trees, and they're, you know, under the town's purview. Lastly, this proposal is consistent with the conservation and the plan of conservation and development, so I do not foresee any major issues with the proposal itself. There are some standard conditions to be placed as part of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, which are part of the regulations. These are not conditions that I have written, but they're in our Town of Stratford Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. So I pulled them out and put in the staff report so that they are, you know, embedded into the approval letter and that it's made clear that during, before, during, and after construction, the town expects that, you know, construction be done in a manner that it does not clog the drains, cause more noise, odor, and other, you know, types of issues to the residents nearby. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Before we hear from the public, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the petitioner or the Town Planner?
Paul Aurelia for the Town Planner. So for the waiver of open space requirements, is that, is that a function of the Planning Commission?
Yes. Subdivision regulations mandated, so the commission can grant a waiver of open space, and it's legitimate in his case because the fifth lot is just to enclose, you know, a cellphone tower, so it's not functioning as a residential lot, so essentially, he's only creating four lots for city foundations, one of which is existing.
Thank you.
William Boyd, question?
There's an existing cellphone tower there now. Where, that house is unoccupied now? That's in Lot 1?
1.
That house is not occupied?
It is occupied.
It is occupied. So there's a cell tower now. Is there a regulation that they can build another one or increase to one there? So considering people build their houses there, is that fixed or is that finite to where they can't build another one? Can they increase it? Can they add?
So cell towers are regulated not by local zoning, but by the Connecticut Siting Council. I'm not an expert in it, but that's a tall tower. It's 110 feet tall. I know they're never going to get approval for another cell tower on the site, nor would they want one. They have a lot of revenue. They have a lot of revenue, the cell tower company that owns it. Is it feasible or possible for the tower to increase in size or change? I guess it's possible. I don't, I don't really see it. It's, most cell towers are in commercial zones. This one just happened to be a windmill that was up there when, in 1996, when Nextel Communication came along and we all decided to put car phones, because it wasn't even mobile, car phones in. And, and it was converted and that's what it remains. So, I can give you no assurances, but I will tell you that their perpetual easement is very strongly worded. They paid north of $2 million and less than $3 million, I don't want to publicly say the number, for that tower. So, it's, it's buttoned up pretty tight. I think it's going to be there for, until satellites take over.
My last question was the easement, that one driveway is going to be the easement for each of those properties?
So, if the property is developed according to what I think is the highest and best way, I would think a single driveway, as I am proposing in this site development plan, would be logical. But it's really critical, and I will be writing this, that if a single driveway is put in, that each of the people in the, of the three lots have the right to use it, but they also have the responsibility to maintain it. Plowing, any maintenance, and I've been selling real estate for a long time and in Easton, there's a lot of little private roads where there's no agreement in place. You know, three people, I can't afford this, that. I mean, you need an ironclad, deeded on every deed, maintenance agreement and easement agreements between the three property owners, even to the point of stipulating, you know, what happens in the event of default? What, it's like, almost like a condominium association for the driveway, if is the best way I can describe it. So, the kind of rules and regulations. But yes, absolutely.
So, that was my question, because that back lot, the person in the front, if they don't, not handling it, you can't get to the back lot. So, that, like you said, it's going to be an ironclad agreement?
Let me see if I can show you. So, the driveway that I'm proposing is right here and it goes straight up. It's 18 feet wide. When it gets to this point, this here peels off a driveway this way to this house. Does he have the next map? If this other plan shows it better. So, as the houses. So, the driveway comes up and right here, they turn into this house. The driveway continues, when you get to this point, they turn into this house. The driveway then continues a little bit further to the property line, then dives down into this house. So, this single driveway is serving all three. If this is built this way, I'm not saying it will be, this driveway is technically on Lot 3's property. Well, the entire driveway is on the little accessway that is designed for that rear lot. So, Lots 4 and Lots 2 will clearly have easement, vehicular and pedestrian easement rights over this. We'll call it an accessway or driveway.
Thank you. Question for Susmita.
Go ahead.
You said the town, there's a law, you noted MS something is a state law where you have to... Can you explain that a little bit? Does he have to do that? Is that law after he did his plan? Or is it a law now?
Oh, it is a state statute, municipal stormwater discharge. So, it's meant for streets to be discharged, you know, into our, you know, it makes direct discharge into the town's stormwater system. It's, in the past, when the municipal laws were created by EPA, they used to look at pollution at a larger scale and, you know, filtration and treatment of polluted water as a strategy. But the focus is shifted to sustainability reasons. And right now, it's like every single property, every developer is responsible for ensuring that the waters are not polluted. So, that's why, you know, they have to make sure they have retention and detention systems in place. They have to, you know, gradually release the polluted water into the town's drainage system. And that, it's, it's a check and balances. So, based on MS4 system, we have to every year send back a checklist of items that we are doing as a town to be surveyed, a sheet recertification every year for this program. And in that sheet, we show how many developments have been approved and what kind of measures have been undertaken, how much would be the total volume into the drainage system and how, what kind of measures have been undertaken. So, that's why, I mean, for a developer, it would like, this was not something taken 10 years ago, but, you know, from a grand, you know, perspective of things, by taking care of this property and property, you know, we are trying to ensure that the peak discharge, you know, flow does not, you know, more than or contribute.
So, he is in compliance now or we need other drawings to see that?
Right now, he has to be on the book. Now, he's going to design a drainage system for the new homes. So, the plans is presented for the application, so he did not address town engineer's comments. But this afternoon, he has provided a new plan. And the town engineer said it seems fine, but he has to also look at the calculations. So, if the commission recognizes the condition of flow, then it will be more time for his team to interact with the town engineer to count it out, you know.
Got you. Okay, that sounds like a perfect.
I just want to point out that the applicant said his driveway is 18 feet wide. Is that 18 or 35?
No, the accessway is 25 feet wide. That's the actual deeded width. But the driveway itself is only 18 feet wide. And that's pretty wide, by the way. I mean, that gives, you know, normally, they're not that wide, but that's wide enough. So, if somebody decides to come out of, we'll call it house number three and somebody wants to come down from house number four, they can, you know, go by each other. It narrows after, after the second house to, I believe, 12 or 14 feet at that point. Because there won't be any two-way traffic for that little spot.
Because that very long regulation should require an accessway to the driveway. It says accessway to the driveway.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, may I address you regarding the town planner's comments?
Sure.
Great. So, we discussed quite a bit about stormwater management. I believe it is already handled, but I couldn't find the maps. Kevin left them outside somewhere in a mailbox, so I just, I don't know. He said on the side door, I couldn't find them. But I believe those have already been addressed. I have no problem with, after closing the public hearing, you table, if you choose to, table deliberations until next month. There's no urgency here to make sure those calculations are done. Or you can, if you are inclined, so inclined to approve it, approve it with a condition. As far as the easement, along the rear of the property, I'm going to get into a little bit of hearsay, I guess. Mr. Fedorko had some sort of agreement with the town of Stratford. And it's my understanding from people, prominent people in town, let me point out this drainage pipe. Some prominent people in town that that pipe was installed, and I'm not sure by whom, by either the town or Mr. Fedorko, and they used to bring town trucks and dump leaves back there. And they literally filled a wetland. It was my understanding, there was a pond back there. There's no pond anymore. This all occurred way before our watch, probably in the 60s and 70s. I have no idea. I don't even know, that's a buried pipe somewhere, according to this plan. And this was taken off of a survey done in 1996. I do know that Candlewood Road, which is on the top of this map, has a catch basin in the bottom of the street, right before the golf course, which goes, I don't know if it goes into a pipe or a trench and goes into supposedly that pipe. I have absolutely no problem in granting the town of Stratford an easement. What I do not want to do is burden the property owners with the responsibility of maintaining a pipe, which we don't even know what the size of it is or where it is. If it's drowning, if it's functioning and it's operating and the town wants an easement to go rotor, router it out or do whatever, they, they can see fit to whatever they choose to do. They may choose to abandon it and trench it. It's in a sep, it's an upland review area of wetlands. So, anything that goes back there, I mean, according to Kelly Kerrigan, that's a no-touch zone for me, for me. It's, it's way in the back. So, if it in fact does exist, which I believe it does, it's on the map, but I have never physically seen it, I'd be more than happy to grant an easement to the town of Stratford for drainage through that pipe, provided that the town of Stratford is responsible for it. Because I, you know, if they don't clean out the catch basin and the pipe blocks up and then I gotta go through somebody's, or somebody's got to, who owns that house has to send an excavator back there to try to figure it out. That's my, my reason for asking the town's responsibility. You know, sidewalks is, is a request. I mean, that's the commission can take that for what it is. I built a house with a partner in Milford a few years ago. He was, built the house, excuse me, I was just a financial partner. And the town would not waive the sidewalk regulation. And there is literally a sidewalk from nowhere to where, nowhere, for 75 feet or whatever it is. And if this commission mandates it, I will build a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere. But it's, to me, doesn't, doesn't seem logical. And lastly, street trees. And I respectfully disagree with your interpretation, Susmita, of the regulations. When you put in a new road, if I, like, when Hunter Ridge was built and all these new roads, when Perry Lane was built or off of Nichols, they put in a new road and they put street trees right down the road every 75 feet or so. I am building no road. I am building no infrastructure in town property. All I'm doing is literally adding one driveway into James Farm Road. So, if I owned, if this farm was 100 acres instead of 10 acres, would I have to run trees all the way down James Farm Road to put this driveway in? I don't think that was the intent of the regulation. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak to the legality of what it is. But I think, you know, I'd be more than happy to work with Kelly to add some trees. I don't know if you'd want them in the town right of way or on the property or how that would all work. Normally, when you put in a new subdivision, it, those trees are put on town property. There's sidewalks that go down and then there's that like kind of grassy area and you'll see a pear tree. And then, you know, about 20 years later, they're a problem because they're, they're too big. But I, I think a couple oak trees in the front would be nice and I'd be more than happy to stipulate. But I, again, respectfully disagree on the regulation. But again, I'm not a lawyer. You're the professional. But I want to thank you for hearing my, my presentation, what I'm, what I'm trying to accomplish here. You know, in closing, and I will say this for the record, and I know we're being taped, one of the undercurrents of me buying this property is profit. I'm a developer. But I also live in the neighborhood. And if you know what's been going on on James Farm Road, this site has a site plan for 192 single-family apartments, which was sent to me after I bought it. And I told that engineer, who's been before this committee, I have no interest in doing that. I wanted to go for what we call low-hanging fruit, have a nice estate setting with beautiful houses. And that's what I'm presenting. So, I know I'm asking for a few considerations, but I think this is a wonderful opportunity to take a relatively large piece of land in the North End and develop it in a very responsible, low-impact way. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Do any of the other, do any of the commissioners have any further questions? I'll now ask members of the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who wish to speak. Each member of the public will be provided three minutes to make their arguments. If someone wishes to speak again, you will be given a chance after everyone who signed up gets their chance to speak first. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the subject petition? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to just make a general comment? Seeing none? I will now conclude the public hearing portion of this meeting. I'm looking for a motion from a commissioner to table this petition.
Commissioner Vacole, make a motion to table the petition.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. So moved. That we move to the next order of business on the agenda, which is the administrative session. May I have a motion to open the administrative, administrative session in the balance of the planning commission agenda?
Make a motion to open the administrative session.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second that.
All in favor? So moved. I'm now looking for a motion to take the petition regarding the proposed subdivision at 6:30 James Farm Road off of the table and open this agenda item for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make the motion to take this off the table, 6:30 James Farm Road, and open it for discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Do any of the commissioners have any comments? Or this is time for discussion, so questions for Susmita? The petitioner's still in here, so if you'd like to ask him any questions?
Right. Paul Aurelia, a couple of questions. One is on the waiver for open space. When should we do that?
I think you can take a vote on the public hearing item first and then you can take a vote on the waivers.
Okay, Paul Aurelia, again, with my second question about the sidewalks. I did, I did notice a sidewalk coming from Candle, Candlewood over to the property. And I understand Mr. Casey's stance on sidewalks. I, I don't understand the offset there. Do you have, can you help me with that at all?
Yeah. Mr. Casey's point was if a map looking at, and you're faced with applying to the sidewalk, he should be asked to do that so that the town doesn't have to be the load of building the sidewalk there. So, in the future, if the town decides to ever invest in sidewalks on that street, this piece is taken care of by the applicant who is proposing. And you're just connecting it to the town investor in the town to, you know, inside. I know it looks like sidewalk or a nowhere right now, but, you know, when you put something in place, it's a more stronger reason for expanding that, you know what I mean? Like, if Mr. DiCilio puts a sidewalk, you know, it's probably now people are complaining to the town that there is no connection, you're being connected. With the first leg in and then you can expand on it.
I'd like to just follow up on that. The planning commission is, you know, there's a sub-commission, the Greenway, where the Greenway is meant to have a bicycle lane, right, that goes from forest to shore. And it's, doesn't happen overnight. It's one piece at a time. If you went by the property right now, there is a sidewalk that's on James Farm Road that's right next to the property that, yeah, it abruptly stops. But then with this subdivision, would extend that sidewalk. So, every little piece, you know, makes the puzzle. So, that's just a general comment for you guys to consider. Is there any other comments or things you'd like to open for discussion regarding 6:30?
Yes, William Boyd, Zone 2. Wrote some notes down, easements, sidewalk, you already went over. Street trees. Street trees, I know there was kinda consideration with um, our town conservationist to, to Mr. DiCilio's point. What he's building didn't require something that would have been a requirement before. Did the town engineer or town conservation, did she give you an answer as to what she would have liked or recommendation?
She gave me uh, from the administration's, I think back to all of that, it's why people have, you know, disagreements on this, there's need for it to be a certain way. Um, because if you look at the subdivision regulations, it doesn't say for large subdivisions, street trees are required. It just says, street trees are required for subdivisions. And it's all, again, a matter of creating your environment and, um, you know, ensuring that you're just in the open, having effect as much as you can. So if, you know, if that one is building these street trees, he definitely has to contact the conservation department. Because again, um, they are going to be required and how, how far, what kind is something that they should get done. Um, but, you know, in all fairness, um, to the town and the community that is first expansion, the P O C D means what we've heard from people in current P O C D, and it's a current plan of conservation development. The town would like to see, um, creating, um, environment, the town would like to see a connected pedestrian and bicycle network system. And that must be, um, very established for the area.
So in keeping with the P O C D, as the planning commission part of it, it would make sense to put trees there, same to Brian's point with the sidewalk. If it's there, then it's a connectivity going forward. And the other thing would, if we didn't do it, would we run a file if we recommended that he doesn't have it? And future projects, would this kinda play into future projects like, well, you did it for this one, not for this one?
Well, we tend to compare that as well. It depends on the location and what we're trying to recommend. In this case, uh, if you look at our, we already have our face one, that's going to be soon to be going to the town hall and the Barn Avenue. From Barn Avenue together, as we, we're looking at, um, putting the face two there. From there to Roosevelt Forest is all, you know, we have, there's another strategy to connect the local roads. So now when we're trying to connect local roads, you need shells on the road for icicles, and then maybe sidewalks for pedestrians. So that's where this whole thing comes into play and the larger vision is to make forest to shore. So residents who wanna ride the bikes, who wanna walk, are able to walk from forest to shore. And this all falls in that, somebody is asking, um, to eliminate it somewhere on an square or an industrial site. Uh, because, you know, there's no street trees anywhere, the road is too narrow. That's a different case, that's a different scenario. Can you compare that location to, I have this group that has street trees around here.
Thank you. With that being said, um, are there any other further questions? Would any of the commissioners like to make a motion?
Paul Aurelia, um, I'm gonna give a motion a try here. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for six-thirty James, James Farm Road. As it is consistent with the town subdivision regulations and the P O C D, that the approval is contingent upon compliance with inland wetland commission recommendations, uh, compliance with all recommendations and concerns of the town engineer, including the stormwater management plan. And uh, compliance with any street trees requirements of the conservation superintendent and any requirements outlined in the town planner staff report. Additionally, that the approval require sidewalks to be installed on James Farm Road.
Would anybody like to second that?
Sarah Graham, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So moved.
Do you want to take a vote on the waivers separately?
That was, we're, we're on the same wavelength. That's perfect. Um, I know Mr. Aurelia had mentioned it in the motion for the approval of the six-thirty James Farm Road, but um, I'd like a motion first on the uh, waiver or non-waiver of the sidewalk. Um, would someone make a motion for that, please?
Yeah, Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion that we do not waive the sidewalk requirement.
I'm looking for a second.
Sarah, I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous, so moved. For the open space, uh, right now, just if, if you don't mind, Sismita, can you just give just a brief overview of what we're voting on, just so that everybody's clear?
Yes, um, right now the town
Does anybody have any questions? I'm looking for a motion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion that we waive the open space requirement for this application.
Sarah, I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye, so moved. Okay, moving to item one on the administrative session. Uh, it's the approval of minutes from our meeting on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
Sarah, I make a motion to approve the February, uh, twenty-twenty-three mean, meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, so moved. Next is um, item five on the agenda. Looking for a motion to open this up for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, uh, make a motion that we open item five for discussion.
All in favor? Um, Sismita, if you don't mind, could you just give us a brief overview of this um, item? It's regarding seven-ninety-five James Farm Road.
Sure, um, this is the petition that here is so this is upon the request of the town council to review and recommend or not recommend acceptance of open space, um, in the town property, as a town property. So, um, I think it's very straightforward, there's only available to me, um, the petition on that.
Is everybody clear? Any questions? Looking for a motion?
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion that we um, recommend approval, um, that the town accept the open space parcel at seven-ninety-five James Farm Road.
Sarah, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Unanimous. Item six on the agenda is the erosion and sediment control plan regarding the proposed subdivision located at six-thirty James Farm Road. I'm looking for a motion just to open this for discussion.
Chairman, I think, isn't that five-hundred Peters Lane? Six?
Um, there may be a typo, I'm certain, that it's in regards to
Oh, are we, oh.
Yes, I'm certain that's in regards to the subdivision discussed, six-thirty James Farm Road.
Oh, okay.
So at this point, there might be some questions, so I'm looking for a motion just to open this for discussion.
Sarah, I'll make a motion to open uh, this for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. I'm gonna ask the town planner again, if you don't mind, just give a brief overview of this um, this item.
So, um, like I mentioned in my discussion before, um, so the water sediment control measures have been taken before during the construction for a, and also, um, for the town. In this case, I don't know that I would choose to sell the lots and the less I may be needing, um, renovation on this for keeping that control within the plan, um, so that maybe we're sort of, like, the whole nest of materials to those creations through this construction. Um, there's a medical adjustment control and, um, sure, you have, um, the, if we have some problems. So, um, we have four standard conditions and a town of general variation that, um, we all have the site and the technicals. Um, so then these are, um, which I know of.
And just for the record, this is stressed, um, largely in the inland wetlands, um, stipulations for approving this, so it's just part of it. With that being said, is there any questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion. Uh, that we approve the erosion and sediment control plan for six-thirty James Farm Road subdivision, contingent upon the following items recommended by the town planner in the staff report, and I'll read those items. Uh, one, all necessary siltation and erosion controls shall be in place and a zoning enforcement officer notified for an inspection prior to any site construction work being performed. Two, immediate onsite modifications shall be employed when an erosion problem develops. Three, in evaluating this application, the commission has relied upon information provided by the applicant and if such information subsequently proves to be inaccurate or incomplete, this approval may be modified, suspended, or rescinded. And finally, four, the applicant shall submit a more detailed plan for fugitive dust control to be provided to the zoning enforcement officer prior to building demolition activities.
Sarah, I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye, so moved. The balance of this meeting's uh, purely discussions and updates. Um, we're moving to item eight on the agenda, which is the implementation plans for the Greenway and Complete Streets. Uh, Mr. Todd, do you have any updates for us?
Yes, I'm pleased to alert you all that we're, we're, um, in, well, the town hall. So the rates are already being accepted by consultants, we can make those, um, at the end of this week. Um, hopefully we should see something on the ground, um, starting from May, um, as soon as we can. So it's a good year for the town, after two years of efforts. Um, and hopefully with the open space, um, we do better in the procedure, uh, which is, well, that makes. Um, regarding Greenway, please do, um, it was, um, the town chair has made that, um, long with the project. It was the only one that's accepted as part of the two-year extension. So that's going to be done simultaneously, um, that face one.
That is great news and thank you again for all of your hard work. Ms. Graham, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Um, any questions regarding that? Finally, uh, we're at item nine, which is the Plan of Conservation Development, P O C D. Mr. Todd, again, if you don't mind, can you give us any updates?
Sure, um, so we've been working full speed on, um, on the drafts, uh, writing and reviewing. So, um, Rory Jacobson, our consultant, has been sharing some drafts with me and I've been proofreading them, editing them, and sending back the most of her, so we can do that. And we felt like we were at a point where we could share all the rest of them, you know, other, um, staff members and planning mission members and video and others. So, um, just this app, I sent you two chapters by email, why is the line use in zoning chapter, why is the introduction chapter? Um, if you have any comments, please see there with those, so I can bring that to Rory. This is, um, I was in the draft. I also reviewed the housing chapter, the section, and I gave her some comments. She maybe, you know, edited the chapters and gave back her comments and her draft version tomorrow. So whenever I receive them, and I appreciate it, I'm sending to you and the technical advisor committee members simultaneously. So we have a meeting with the technical advisor committee on Thursday, which is when we walk and strategies and drafts, but, um, we get a post by, like, a day today to review that. And then we, um, if we feel that something, um, we want a different reading or something's been missed, or we feel that it's not being addressed to that, or if you feel like, um, something's been changed.
Obviously, you guys, everybody's been majorly participating in this, so, you know, take the time, read the drafts and, um, you know, this is not a, you, you have the, every right to make any comments and, um, help out as much as possible, so I strongly encourage, um, you do send the comments to Sismita and she'll work with Rory to, um, you know, take your ideas into consideration.
I also wanna add that we'll post the drafts onto the, um, P O C D website for the public to view and offer their comments, um, so, uh, and then, uh, starting, I think, May fifteenth, when it's officially referred to the region, it'll become like a document that is out for the public to review and comment and there'll be a legal ad on that as well, as to where they can come and find the document and review it. So there's a, there's a process where a public can also review this and offer their feedback.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the P O C D? Um, if you don't mind, Sismita, just wondering what next steps are, just so the group knows, um, you know, when we put, how we're standing for getting the full draft out and are we still in, you know, on pace to get this done?
Yes, um, so we have one technical advisor committee meeting this, uh, week, where we will share, um, housing line use and something and introduction chapters with the TAC members. Then we have one more coming up in April when the other chapters, um, like, um, community character, urban design, mobility, environment, those will be shared with the TAC members. Maybe I'm just longer time, remember that hours. And do you look to see the drafts as well? Our goal is to get a final draft ready by May first or May fifteenth, um, without time frame. So during the May planning commission meeting, we will have post to final draft. That will be referred to the regional code, um, metropolitan council members, um, and state, um, management production and state office policy management, um, per, um, we just reviewed static, um, um, comments and plans. So, um, that will be referred and then they will submit their comments to us and specify data they have afterwards. And then we can also move this forward to, um, to a public hearing and then refer to the town council to review, um, adoption at the town council. Um, the town council may choose to wait until we receive all state agencies' feedback. Uh, but then the public will have opportunities, these two public hearings. One will be for the planning commission, one will be for the council, where they can come and express, um, their opinions on the.
Great, thank you. Any questions? General comments? I appreciate everybody's hard work. Um, at this point, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So moved.